Budget page six. RV parking lot revenues, we're not going to have an RV parking lot revenue. I'm sorry. I quit one. So you found five thousand dollars and now you're taking part of the way. I keep looking at this, you know. Then I have, is there an increase in this budget for the dog park for their access cards from so the twenty-five to fifty? As we had discussed that, because they wanted to do that, the people who go to the dog park and have the twenty-five put aside for certain things for the dog park.
That's certainly something you guys can discuss, but this is not.
Alright, I also discussed, does this include that people who go to the common pools get one access card for free for the whole family? And I mentioned to Chris that maybe we can figure out maybe a fee for them to get an extra access card. Is that included anywhere in here?
No, nothing's been, we can't just, nothing's been adopted or anything, the change of rates.
I'm just asking, okay. Alright, um, let's go down to the engineering phase.
Oh, we're still on?
Still on page seventeen, yes. Administrator services expenditure side going down, okay? Alright. Did our, it's, we increased that by six thousand dollars? Is there a reason we're increasing by six thousand dollars? Did our contract go up to increase it? Or just, we just arbitrarily decided to add six thousand?
Those numbers there, they're produced from their system. Those are the administrative engineering, like when they come here for meetings, things like that. And what's been billed per year, that's what's projected now.
Okay, because there, it says that we're only going to get, recharge eighteen thousand this year. So that means we're going up six thousand.
Now, this is also, this is only the part for the administrator, there's, their engineering costs are throughout this entire budget.
Okay, I have that circled here. Okay, how about the attorney's fees?
Those are the same way.
You know, if the attorney left, wouldn't you?
I know, yeah.
Saw it coming.
Alright, um, agenda page twenty, budget page nine. See, he's coming back now, I'm not, let's finish talking about it. Alright, sod installation in the dog park, we did the big dog park, okay? And I know we planned to do the small dog park, is it going to cost us twenty-five thousand dollars?
More than likely it will, that's going to be what we spent for the large dog park. And the small dog park is a little bit smaller, I believe, but, I mean, you would be talking a very, very slim savings. I think most of the cost isn't that mobilizing your own work, not so much material.
And we have, we have a bid right now from our current vendor to do that work for the irrigation system and the sod replacement. And we're at twenty thousand dollars. And I had another consultant come in today who's giving us another bid.
And we have somebody in this budget that we're in presently for it, though.
Correct.
Okay, so it wouldn't be using the old high budget. Okay, my next thing is soccer field sod replacement, okay? Isn't that in Rainscapes already? We have sod replacement in their contract?
This is over and beyond, and it's what happened last year. And last year, we were actually, I believe, a little over thirty thousand for that replacement. And that's anticipated, it's going to happen again, so that's why we moved it up.
And we are taking steps to try to minimize that. We had a third-party vendor come in and do an evaluation of our maintenance schedule. And that report will be finished this week. And there's some good, good ideas coming up and one thing we're working with. And we're also working with the leagues right now, but the field layouts is partway through the season. We're going to flip all the fields so that they can be restripped in different directions. Instead of ending up with those high wear areas where we have to spend all that money on sod. We hope to minimize some of that through management and operation savings. And the leagues, they could work fine with them. And we're going to meet, we'll have one more, and then we're having to survey and add different pins set in for colors. And then two times a year, we're going to flip all those fields.
I mean, that makes sense, and I wish we would have been doing it for a long time, you know, just every other season? Flipping around?
Yeah, during the season, also what we'll end up too with that product is a nice set of apps with the fields labeled. So they can put them up, and when they tell everyone, well, this is field five, no, it'll be right there.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And with that, we're doing for an operational end. And we've also have a couple of separate evaluations being done on our fertilizing schedule. We may add an irrigation treatment in besides the one deep time, the one that takes lesser time. We could go in during the season and minimize the damage from all that compaction, so.
If we talk to, are we going over and talking to people at Red Sox?
We have not talked to them yet, but we have a couple turf experts who are working.
Okay.
I mean, I know they have a different foundation, but, so we're taking operational steps to minimize the sod costs. And we hope that pays off, but that's what we use.
He's talking to you, Kathy, not the rest of us. Chris was talking to you, so.
I'm listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, agenda page twenty-one, budget page ten. Do we have a date for the movie event? That's my question.
It's not budgetary.
I know, but we're putting it in, it was in last year's budget, but they didn't have a movie. So I want to make sure we're going to have a movie this year.
I'll ask and see when they were planning on doing it. I know they set a date for the fishing tournament.
Alright, um, agenda page twenty-two. Page eleven in the, okay. I'm looking down at other fees and charges, I'm looking at the reserve, the capital program. Okay, why are we doubling that too?
Well, so that, that there, and I'm not actually sure, I went and asked Stephen how it went to three nineteen. Because I had put it two fifty, and I went and checked the one I sent over. However, that was, that one fifty-six is just, as far as I know, been random. We thought it was a percentage, it's not. I was recommending to increase it and to have it an even number, but that also gives you, and it's maybe nice that it accidentally went up to three nineteen. Because it gives you a little bit more wiggle room. If you kept it the same way it's been, a hundred fifty-six thousand.
But it also increases the assessment.
Oh, no, I'm saying wiggle room, if you come up with another project or something that you need to add, you could reduce that.
Right, and I'm just saying.
But it was two fifty, I really don't know why he put that in three nineteen.
Shouldn't that just be the same as on page thirty-seven of the budget? Which is the twenty-twenty, simply oh-oh-one, general fund, oh-oh-one, twenty-twenty total of all those? Shouldn't they be one and same?
The total?
Yeah.
What page are you talking about?
Well, look at page thirty-seven, which is the general fund capital improvement, which is what this is, yes, reserve, thirty-seven. And we have a defined need of two ninety-eight, or two eighty-nine eight hundred.
No, that, that would not, that's, that's separate.
I'm sorry?
That's separate, that, this is the reserve that contributes to that fund. So that's a five-year plan, this is the reserve that goes to some years, it could be higher, some years.
Okay, so if you went out, if you went out then and took, what, nine, ten divided by five? That'd be a little bit less than two fifty? And the reason for?
I, I had put two fifty in, and I checked the file that I sent in, and we had two fifty. Why it went to three nineteen, I honestly do not know.
A bunch of three sixty.
No, you're, the line right above it is reserve capital program three nineteen.
I'm sorry, I totally misunderstood, I'm sorry, three nineteen.
Can you try and get Stephen on the phone so we can ask him that question?
See if you have, you want to have somebody and see if you have any other ones, and just get them on.
But it is, yes, I've got what's in, and he is.
And you, you might better just take a picture and text it, just so he knows.
If he's trying, that wouldn't be a good idea.
Go ahead, Kathy. My next, next, um, Mr. Phil? I'm attacking all the budgets, okay? I did ask you earlier, I said this was a, a little bit of a high increase, and you did tell me you're working at it to lower it?
Yeah, in fact, we've al, we've already submitted numbers to Stephen that knocked the number that you're seeing down by about a hundred and fifty thousand total. We're shooting for getting an increase that we had hoped, less than three percent. Right now, it's looking like about three point three percent. And I know this won't do me any good, but we'd like to register a little bit of a complaint here. That our, the biggest part of our increase is the overhead, the administrative fees that we are getting from you folks. Or from the district. They are going up forty, over forty percent. Now, that, that is in part because your fees have gone up, in part because the allocation percentage went from ten to fourteen percent. So our overhead fees are going up more than forty percent. And that's causing, that's causing us, we, the rest of our budget is going up less than two percent. But with that added in, it's going up a little over three percent at this point. What we don't, we always have problems with is not knowing exactly how that pans out when we get to the EAUs. Because that's a collection that Stephen does. So we know what it looks like in this league. But we're trying, as I say, we're trying to keep it to, to no more than a few percent of this.
Good, thank you.
And we have another budget workshop, we're actually going to look at it again this year.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for attending our budget workshops.
Do you want me to continue?
Yep. Unless you have a?
I just wanted, I just wanted you to answer about the impact that all of the additional building in Pelican Reserve is having on this budget.
Well, it certainly impacts our, our, you know, what we call the HOA agreement budget. I guess shows someplace there. And that's because we're taking over, taking over all the roads in Cypress Grove. But the extra, but the extra building, everything is predicated on the twenty, on full build-out, twenty-four ninety-eight.
Okay.
And so that, you know, that would mean that our EAUs, they seem to vary from year to year, but not by a great deal.
Now, what about the, taking over the additional reserve? Does that have any effect on our Pelican Reserve budget?
Well, yes, it does. You know, the, in the water waste or in our ponds budget, if you will, yeah, that, that goes up. But we, we've accounted for all of that in this budget.
Okay, well, I just wanted to get that on the record.
Yeah.
This is not all increases from the same basis last year.
Right. You know, we, you know, we, regarding to the overhead, we're going to be, I think we're going to be taking a closer look, look at that. We haven't looked at it much, because over the years, it hasn't, hasn't moved all that much. But we're concerned about whether there's some things in there we're getting charged for, that we should be charged for. If we look at some of the descriptions, you know, there are things like teen uniforms.
Ten to fourteen percent doesn't sound like very much, but you can say that it's a forty percent increase.
It's a forty percent increase, yeah, well, and it's, it's significant. You know, it's, it's, it's an increase of about forty thousand dollars in our budget. Phil, one thing that I think everybody needs to understand on your budget, it's confusing. It took me a long time to finally figure this out, and Tony correct me if I'm wrong. Your twenty-nineteen assessment summary, you had three thousand ninety-seven EAUs. This year, it's gone up to thirty-one oh-four fifty-three. I was sitting there thinking, what ridiculous is going on, can't they count? It's not that simple. When you're plaid, whether it's occupied or not, somebody is paying for it. So about from here on out, the only changes you're going to see in your budget relative to your EAUs are going to be two things. One, what happens to these commercials, when we get all the King's English red as to who owes what, and the golf course. Those are the only two things that's going to change in Pelican Reserve. That's it, you have no more land to put a residential unit on.
That's correct. They are, they are all in, in the number, either we're paying it or one ours is paying it.
So, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that the number you'd ask, the number that you see this year is pretty dang close to the number you're going to see from here on out.
Mrs. Flaherty, do you want to continue?
I do have more, but not, nothing more.
Yeah, I, they, they seem to bounce, bounce around from year to year, it, something that I, it's, but not, not, the changes aren't, haven't been significantly realized. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Thank you, Phil. Mr. McCollough?
Next, next on the chopping block.
Joe McCollough, Sonya Gateway.
I would like to see if you can reduce your budget also. You have an engineering fee that you put in for a thousand, you plan to use five hundred this year. Last year, it was actually a hundred and five, so I was wondering if both the attorney and engineering fee could both be reduced to five hundred? Since last year, it was one oh-five and two seventy-nine. And you do have reserves if something does come up that you might need to use them. It was just a question, if you would like to?
Sure, I, I will be honest, in some years, we've been quite by surprise with the charge, and that was a few years ago when other things were going on. And it could be reduced. The legal expenses, we left that in there just in case as a buffer, in case, and it becomes a buffer for the whole budget. Just as I believe Mike before was referring to, another place could be a buffer. But nevertheless, it was a small sum of money on a per-door basis, we're talking a little bit.
I know, but I'm trying to reduce everything a little, every little bit pounds, so that it all adds up.
A thousand dollars is like one hour of talking to them.
I should be so lucky. Can I do that? Thank you, I'll do that.
At least a couple hours, anyway.
I, I'm just, I'm just asking, if I'm trying to bring everything down.
Well, as Mike had mentioned before, we could, it's on sanctions. We have the same thing, but to reduce, I'm not sure how much we'd really appreciate it. It would, I'd rather have a little bit of cushion, a little extra money in my pocket, just in case something comes up. Like we had that storm last year, we had two years ago. And that had a lot of money, the budget got a little lot of whack from that. And we had to throw some money in from the old, I mean, from our gateway, HOA fund, just to fix some things that way. Rather than send it toward Gateway, toward the old fund, old Ford fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I continue? Yep, please. Agenda page thirty-one, budget page twenty. Alright. Okay, um, in here and in another place, you have a truck. Are you planning to buy another truck?
We're not, yes.
Okay, did you buy the truck for my budget?
Yes.
Okay, why do we need another truck? I'm just, this, I mean, somewhere along the line, we need to cut this budget, because the percentage is still too high as far as I'm concerned.
And that's fine, we can, now, there are many times that you go out and grab a vehicle, there isn't one. And with getting more staff and field staff, better ones who use the trucks, we're just trying to keep up with that. And I believe it was a Tacoma, I think it was twenty-five thousand this year. Whereas the last one was, we had budgeted forty, spent thirty-one. And the estimate for, the quote for a Tacoma would be more like twenty to twenty-one. We put a twenty-five in there. And the Fords too, the F-150, I think, might be, I don't know, what do you think, Krista? They could be.
They'll be on company else.
Yeah. They're, they're not hanging on there.
I'm just saying that somehow, an increase of eight percent is still too high in my estimation, when the cost of living isn't eight percent.
Now, and, and that's capital, so that's actually not going to have anything to do with the percentage increase in the assessment.
Okay, I'm going to continue down another page. Go ahead, okay, please. Alright, you have here water quality, are we going to be testing the water monthly like we used to?
That's, that's a contractual arrangement with the health department, that's all required by our permit. And we actually have them do it, because they can actually do it a little cheaper than we can, our own staff. And it has a second set of eyes on it, so people ask, it's like, well, the health department doesn't, we don't even do that. Now, we do a lot of the other testing on the water system or the irrigation side. And also some of the disinfection product testing and some of the higher dollar testing, we do the sampling ourselves and take it to lab ourselves. But that, that sampling with the health department is the bacterial analysis and the distribution system, and it's done every month.
Okay, I'm just, I don't know. I'm not going to do them all, okay, I'll be nice, I'll wait till next, next meeting, okay? So, agenda page thirty-two. I, I think this is going to be for Kathy.
Okay.
And I think we were, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought today we were just doing general funds, we weren't really working on the enterprise?
Well, there wasn't much direction when we scheduled this, I thought it was kind of just an open discussion. It could be all of them, I held out capital, because we did have an entire workshop for that. But, you know, it was just kind of open, whatever you guys wanted to discuss.
Okay, go ahead.
What, what page do you want to go?
Uh, agenda page thirty-two, uh, budget page twenty-one. Okay, meters, didn't we just install new meters? And why do we need eighty thousand dollars to install new meters?
That is sort of operating, that is for a wide variety of things, for everything that the building department does. And as we go along, we are constantly adding new meters, especially in the Pelican Reserve community, West Side, and all of those meters have to be purchased. And all the equipment goes along with it boxes.
And Pelican Reserve, when they build in, don't pay for these meters?
They pay, they pay. Yeah, they, the fees, but we, we purchase the meters, they are our meters.
Okay, but they pay for those meters, so technically, you're not paying for those meters, they are paying for those meters?
It's on the revenue.
I just, okay.
It's on the revenue side.
It just seems an awful lot of money for us to have, you know, just installed all the meters and the, all on the wall, geez, damn.
We have a lot of new construction.
Give her the numbers. So the question is, that number seems high, what is the average number of, that you project for next year, times material costs? I just, maybe that'll, that might add some clarity.
And there, there are some older meters that weren't replaced originally, and ones with the round that we did, that we have been replacing at the school. And in some of the commercial complexes, and what's recently, at the Gateway Greens condo, we changed that one out to a compound reed meter. So we could get to the low water levels, and that meter itself is seven thousand dollars. And they didn't pay for that, we did, because they paid for their original meter. However, we are making up on revenue, because we're getting revenue for the low reeds that we weren't getting previously.
Right, and that's why I'm asking all these questions, so.
I'm glad to answer them. And we'll get a listing, a listing of all those meters, and also some of the old ones when we're going. We're replacing check valves on them or the curtain system that might be repairs.
Okay, bank fees of twenty-four thousand dollars, okay? I can, thanks, thank you. The twenty-four thousand dollars. I'm, I'm interested in knowing if you looked at other banks, so that this fee could be decreased, that seems awful.
I think that's actually pretty low. And Iberia, I think, kind of because they're a community type bank, work with us, I mean, we could look at it, maybe save two or three thousand dollars. And then, I'm sure the hassle of the billing department switching everything over at the lockbox and things like that for two thousand dollars would possibly increase. I mean, it's twenty-four thousand dollars on millions of revenue a year.
I just, I want, I just want to ask these questions. There was something in your, about the soccer field, some boxes?
Ballast boxes.
Yes.
Oh, ballast boxes for the lights.
Page forty-five, sir.
Thank you. At least we're thinking the same way.
Which, which take on the budget?
Thirty-two. I think it was forty-five.
Soccer park?
Ballast boxes. And we put that in the capital, and the ballast boxes are attached to each of the poles and are required to run the lights. And they are in about deplorable condition, the sides of them are rusting out to where, and, and the sprinklers hit them, that's part of it, you know, over the years. And maybe they were painted a little more often or some protection. But there's actually birds going in there and building nests, which are starting to get into the electrical equipment, but it's time to be replaced. And if the ballast boxes don't work, the lights aren't going to work. And they are expensive, and they're expensive to install. And there's one of those boxes hanging on each one of those lighter banks.
And the capital improvement, we're going to do another time, is this draft correct? Okay, the only thing I still would like to say, go back to page, agenda page twelve, you really don't have to go back. It's eight point two seven is what you have for an increase for, for EAUs. I really do see, we need to really work on decreasing that. The cost of living, like I said, is not eight point two seven. And I know people who are working aren't getting an eight point two seven percent increase in their pay. But I'll, I'll, I'll stop now so that other people can talk in, I'll come back. Mr. Guy? Thank you.
Thank you, Beth Sherman. Worked a touch because Mrs. Flaherty stole some of my standard here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Guy.
Oh, no, you're. On page nineteen. Halfway down, we're spending a lot of money on stormwater system repair and maintenance, for like three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Which page, Joe, Bill?
Page nineteen.
Of the budget itself.
Page eight.
Page eight.
And I know we talked about stormwater system repair on many occasions. And we have three hundred fifty thousand dollars in this year's budget. And you're estimating that we're going to spend three hundred fifty thousand dollars, which, in a way, I'm delighted that we're going to do what the figures we're going to do. But if in fact you're going to spend three hundred fifty thousand dollars this year on, on water repair. Do you in fact need an additional two fifty in this coming upcoming budget?
Yes, sir, I think we could probably use three fifty a year for the next five years to get through the community. And it's kind of the two fifty is just continuing that program. And I also am trying to look for some efficiencies and look at how some of the other, other districts are doing their cleaning. It, it's really just the amount of pipe in the community and what needs to be done. And part of that is, right now, in the place we're going through that cleaning, we just found one head wall in a lake that's almost totally collapsed. So there'll be a three to five thousand dollar repair for that. And we also found another pipe that has a big breach in it, the water's just pouring in from the top. So that as we're going through this, I would, I would say that about two fifty of that's going to be spent for the actual cleaning. And probably fifty thousand for related repairs to the system that we uncover while we're in there.
We just looked at the last meeting, we approved eighty-five thousand dollars a year for the next three years for Pelican Reserve. We're three times the size, and we've never cleaned our sewers. Two fifty's not even enough. In fact, that's going to be one of my points, is to raise it back to three fifty.
You may, you're right, but I remember that some of these, some of, some of the cleaning showed that there wasn't any thing worth worrying about in some of these.
We only addressed the sewers that were, I believe, forty percent clogged and greater. We have a lot more that are twenty percent to forty percent that are equal to that same price.
You're not going to end up eating your dinner off of them. They don't have.
It's, Bill, it's maintenance.
They don't have to be, but when you're spending the taxpayer's money, you have to be reasonable in it.
When the streets flood, and the taxpayer doesn't care.
And one thing we found in this too is, is a number of grades, like right now, we're at six of them, where they're rusting out. now, we're at six of them, where they're rusted out on the edges, and there's, it's a safety concern, and when you get one of those fifty-four by fifty-four inch, you know, grades that order it, buy it and install it, you better have fifteen hundred dollars in your pocket. They're like those ballast boxes that you just.
Okay.
And also, we, we cleaned out the larger pipes. We're, we're not even talking about the smaller ones.
That's correct.
In the, in the entire system, we've got all different sizes of pipe, we didn't even talk about the small.
We started third, didn't you?
Yeah.
I feel like I'm not doing my job if I don't ask the question.
I understand.
I appreciate questions. Page twenty, I, uh, I feel that twenty-five thousand dollars facade for the dog park is out, is outrageous. I'm not gonna say another word about it, except I think that's, that's just beyond the pale. Uh, page twenty-one. I can't understand why, uh, we have propane estimated at this fiscal year at fifty thousand dollars. While I'm glad to see, uh, the twenty-twenty budget down to twenty-five thousand, uh, we've had, we've had that propane system get down for well over a year, have we not?
Yeah. It, it's labeled as propane natural gas, we got rid of the propane, uh, I think over two years ago maybe, it's natural gas. We have a twenty-five thousand and, uh, is what we spent. So, last year, it was thirty.
I think I should have, I think I should have.
It was thirty-two, so.
But do you in fact think you're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars for the gas?
No, no, we have it at twenty-five.
It says fiscal year nineteen projected fifty.
That's, that's their projected from the system. Our budget is that column with the large box around it, fiscal year twenty-twenty budget, twenty-five thousand. The projected is a calculation from their system, but understand that's timing, because we just went through winter where we used almost the entire budget and it's projecting out. So it's projecting over twelve months.
Okay, I'm gonna let it go. Down to the bottom, uh, what is road turnover like signs are drainage for twenty-five grand?
That's, and that's one I believe Chris had wanted, is that one we increased or we talked about out of your mind and maybe we didn't because of that? It was, you want, you wanted to replace a bunch of signage and, I believe, Steven here on Thursday?
Yeah, well, we had, uh, like on Gateway and Griffin, everywhere there's a pedestrian crossing, the signs are not county road spec, they're undersized and they're too low. And so we got an estimate for replacing just that set of signs and it was almost nine thousand dollars.
Why do we wanna do that? We turned over the road in Lee County, why would we let them handle?
Not the signs.
What?
We didn't do the signs. They wouldn't take the signs. If they were to take the signs, we'd have all those old county metal signs.
And, and I'll, I'll look.
They wouldn't take the signs in the negotiation.
Maybe we're responsible for them. And I'll, I'll look to Tony for a little backup on this, but I figure if somebody did get hit in one of those pedestrian crosswalks and their attorney found out that our signs weren't to county's road spec standards, that they were undersized and under.
No, we need to meet the, uh.
It's a liability question.
The green, the manual, the inform manual, uh, control devices, that needs to be adhered to. Uh, and, yeah, it does create exposure to not being compliant with the, for height, sign, reflectivity, all that kind of reason, I mean, the first thing they can.
For some reason, I just thought, once we got rid of OD, Griffin and Gateway Boulevard, that we were, that was pretty clear.
No, we, we wanted to maintain.
Spend a million dollars getting it to a.
We wanted to maintain the signs because we didn't, as Chris mentioned, we didn't want the industrial strength Lee County typical, uh, get it at the dollar store signs. They wanted to have a little more upgrade.
And it, and really is, it'll stagger you on the cost, because if you went to just put up a standard sign, i- it's not very expensive, but when you get into those green aluminum breakaways, they're six to eight hundred dollars per post.
At least.
And, and, and that's why I put the twenty-five thousand, because I have about fifteen that I know need to be replaced for the safety end of it, and, uh, insurance or not, we always get a lot of them run over.
Yep.
Okay, I'm. I'm going by the number, thank you, Mrs. Flaherty has already gone through, but I wanna ask about, on page thirty-two near the bottom, bulk waste water purchases is up from, uh, five eighty-eight to a million, two eighteen.
Page twenty-one.
Page thirty-two, that's to the bottom, from five eighty, from five eighty-eight to a million, two eighteen. That's a. That's a double plus.
Which one? Bulk wastewater? It was one, one million, one hundred and seventy-one last year, we're at one million, two eighteen this year.
But you're estimating five eighty-eight for fiscal nineteen?
The projected? Yeah, and, and, I mean, these lines, I guess, seem weird, I don't know if it's the timing, just like with the natural gas deal, I don't know why it's down like that, especially, you know, we'd say timing of season, but we just went through the heavy season, as well as our bulk potable was right on the line. I'm not sure why that is low. I do know we just got a large wastewater bill, but, um, I mean, I can look into it, but the budget seems in line.
And if that flow increases with the seasonal residents, in the winter, it's the same thing like the propane, there's a real heavy use and they'll start tapering off, but if you do the projected based on the last six months, that's where it would put us at that higher level.
Well, we spent, okay, but in fiscal year eighteen, we spent five sixty-nine. And projected for fiscal nineteen is five eighty-eight. The other, the, the million dollar numbers seem way out of line. Will you look into it?
Absolutely.
And I'll, I'll look at that because there could be part of that true up cost pushed into that.
That's what I.
That's what I was gonna ask.
And we'll, we'll get an answer for that right to you at the next meeting. Because the county has not to date increased their bulk rate. And I, and I did get Stephen called and he said, when you need him, he'd be happy to pull over and get on the phone with some questions. But I asked him the question about the capital reserve and he said, yes, Mike did push it to two fifty, he pushed it to three nineteen when he was balancing the budget. So if you wanted to go back to that one fifty-eight, there would be room in there to push that money to another project.
Okay, Madam Chairman, uh, go ahead, understand, we're not gonna work on a capital project.
No.
That is correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I believe that, I have my schedule.
This one, the last one, so we.
Maybe August first.
Thank you. Thank you for your information.
Mr. Banks?
And just really quick, Chris, when, when you have your, your turf guys come out, when they're looking at the dog park and the soccer park, um, talk to them about, and maybe you haven't had this discussion, but hydro seeding or something, um, because I think in those high traffic areas, you know, what you want is, um, you wanna reduce the traffic on it for one, but at the same time, you need to have the right materials so, um, when we do have rain, like in the summer, that, that grass can expand and recuperate itself. When you don't have any grass there, then it has a tendency just to, you know, whether it's kids or dogs, they'll just continue to, um, disrupt the area. So if you hydro seed with, maybe even like on, um, some turf fields, they'll hydro seed with like a rye or something as a filler, because it grows fast and it comes in, if you lay it thick, it'll come in thick, to give the opportunity for the, for your, whatever grass you're using to, to come in. So, you know, as a potential option, I don't, I don't know if it's, it'd work out here, but with the dog park and soccer park with the traffic, especially during the summer, there may be an opportunity to, you know, to seed that instead of, you know, sod, so I was just thinking about as an opportunity.
And, and that sod's probably a little misleading, because part of that too is one of the issues with the dog park, is it's a little lower and low on the back, so it's really hard on the small dog park. So part of that money is really to bring in some sand and then more topsoil to bring that up and then have it drain off the side, because that's what's happening with that grass there, it's just getting so wet, it can't grow. And so, it's not just all sod, it's really bringing it up, and, and that's what the, the cost is. And, uh, and one thing we tried to save is bringing in the sand, when they did the lake bank and they were scraping that topsoil off, um, I spent fifteen hundred dollars and gave it to the contractor and had him truck it over here, because it was prime topsoil coming right off the rear yards of all those homes.
Yeah.
So he's talking about bringing in sand and then we're gonna put some of that good sod, topsoil on top and bring it up, you know, five inches and then put the sod on top.
Yeah, and that's, that seems to be a problem too with the fields, is with that sand, that kind of settles and it goes, and so you end up with these dips unless you regulate the, the level again with sod, you know, and just trying to, to drain tissues and everything else. And we may look at opportunities throughout the year when we have breaks after the season to come in and, you know, seed, fertilize, promote that growth, uh, in those, in those rare territories, in both areas, both the dog park and, and soccer field, so.
Yeah, could I, uh, you know, just one second, please? I have been down to the dog park for, um, I don't wanna say too much. But if I had a dog, and I usually do, I love him, uh, and I went down there in the summertime, I'd like to have some place to sit with a cover over the top. Do we have, do we have anything like that or have I just missed it?
Well, we have some, uh, material sun shades there that are over sun, and we just put some new benches down there, but, uh, we're getting ready to order, we have in the budget some pergolas.
The what?
Oh, pergolas.
Okay.
And to put those in on each side, then we'll have the benches underneath them. And they're, and they're a little more permanent, a little more hurricane proof and they look nice.
And I still recommend that we, we look into that, the material to go along the fencing, to kind of isolate the, the dog park from the, the soccer park.
We have, we have a lot of those items in the budget pickouts here, including the cameras, and, and a lot of it, to your point, is we're looking very closely at that operation and maintenance to keep from having, you know, managing the asset to keep from having these high repair bills.
And I'll just say that, um, I mean, if you, if you have the right staff in place, then your staff should be driving efficiency, call save across the board, so I think that's the direction we're going in and we have gone in. I mean, uh, I think we kind of lose sight of where we were a couple of years ago with the management company and all that stuff and where we're at today. Being able to make that transition, get the right staff, have the right in-house accountability, we haven't really felt a whole lot of pain by not having management company. Matter of fact, I would have anticipated us to have more pain, um, at least the first year, and we really haven't felt it. And even ultimately as a result, you know, we, we have our district manager who's gotten a recognition that I don't think we ever would have perceived that happening in the past, so, you know, looking at call save opportunities like Kathleen's doing, I think he's fantastic, um, but we can't operate without the appropriate headcount and the tools and the environment that they need to succeed. So, I'm a strong believer, if you've got the right staff in place, you reward them, you, you know, keep them motivated, you have a, a, a career path where they wanna stay, they'll in turn work harder for you, they'll find those, uh, areas of, of, of opportunities. And I would charge the staff to constitutionally driving efficiencies and looking for call saves. And that's something that I, I, I wish we would continue to bake into our annual reviews where we have saved the district, you know, where Chris and, and staff has been able to save the district X amount of money in cost avoidance or call saves or driving efficiencies. Because when we have these meetings and we're calculating, you know, staff cost or something else, it would be nice to say, well, we have all set that with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in call saves this year alone and, and driving efficiencies or just, you know, due diligence or whatever. I don't think we highlight that enough, but, um, you know, it, I think, I think the, the staff is looking at at least headcount responsibly. I agree, we should be more aggressive, like personally, but that's the business that I'm in. So, uh, so, uh, uh, other than that, I'm just saying, make sure that you've got a team around you and the tools to do your job, and as long as you're managing the budget that we lay out there, uh, then I don't, I don't have any problems. So I'm done.
Mr. Tinkell?
I think staff did an excellent job, uh, with the budget and everything we've done. Got a couple of questions. First one on page eight of the budget, not whatever's in the boardwalk, page eight of, eight of the budget. On the general fund, uh, stormwater, I'm very concerned of the decrease in stormwater cleaning from three fifty to two fifty. We have a massive amount of work to be done in cleaning, so I would suggest leaving that where it's at. The second one, for a matter of explanation, uh, we've added a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for litoral maintenance. I'm concerned about the in excess of D O. Right now, we have no litoral maintenance in any contract at all. So, is this the litoral maintenance for just the litorals that are per the D O? Or is this the litoral maintenance for all the litorals, as we were talking earlier when Ted was here? There is a big difference.
Well, we, we.
And a hundred and twenty-five thousand is about half of what we need if it's the latter.
And we, we push that money up and what we'll have to look at is, um, getting the number from our contractor to do the maintenance per the D O's.
That's my concern. I've been talking with George at Aquagenics and it's a dollar per foot of litorals on the assumption that that's two, uh, practices a year at fifty cents each. Now, it will go down in future years because we've never done litoral maintenance. So they've got some work to do first to trim it back, so he suggests using that number, but I think that a hundred and twenty-five, when we meet with him, is gonna be about half of what it really is, so I'm concerned on that price. Other than that, uh, couple of things I could not find. Right now, we have in the budget seventy-nine dollars per E R U in Gateway as an add-on to the budget for the financing of eight million dollars S R F load for phase one. Correct?
Yeah, and I, to answer your question, if you go to the amortization schedule, that's for about eleven and a half million borrowing, so it's increasing the principal by about three and a half million for next year. And the reason it has gone down was one, there are.
You mean the seventy-nine instead of covering eight?
It's.
Provides revenue to cover eleven?
It's in here, it's, it's up in the top, eleven.
Yeah, I was gonna say, where'd you see that, because I've missed that.
Let me find you the page, it's, uh.
Because I always had the understanding we'd spent the entire eight million.
This page forty, I'm sorry, page thirty-one of the budget, forty-three of the agenda, eleven.
Thirty, thirty-one of the budget?
Yeah, eleven, yes. Eleven point eight two three. Um, and the reasons that that did go down, one, is there's some of the operating costs out that have come out from what we were dealing with last year, as well as it looks like there may have been excess collected, and he's using a fund balance of about sixty-six thousand dollars to offset the payments this year.
Okay, I'm gonna put it in English of what I'm trying to say. I believe we have spent the entire eight million dollars.
Three million dollars.
Or close to it, on phase one, or we will at when we finish it here this year. We're going into phase two, we're gonna be doing phase work this year, two word, which I'm gonna guess somewhere between two to four billion dollars, depending on how many of those eight or nine ponds we put out for bid. Or that was fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen ponds, how many of those we put out for bid? My question is, if we go back to S R F and borrow, and had to borrow, let's say, two and a half million, that's the principal and interest equivalent of about thirty dollars per resident, which would make seventy-nine one oh nine.
If, if you go.
But I don't see that in here.
The, the assessment is determined based on the budget for that fund, which is on page forty, I'm sorry, thirty of the budget.
Page what?
Thirty of the budget.
And that's the, the budget payment.
That's a debt service fund.
Where's, where's that at?
Book? In the book, forty-two.
Okay, that's wrong.
And then if you flip the page one, so page thirty-one, forty-three of the agenda, you see in the top right, it's an outstanding balance amortized of eleven million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. That's your additional three point eight million.
Okay, so, we don't need to assess any more than seventy-nine dollars?
No, and the reason it's gone down even more significant was because it looks like there was over, over collected, I don't wanna say over collected, but we have additional funds that meet in addition to the required reserves, and he's using a fund balance of just shy of seventy thousand dollars to offset the cost.
Okay. So, so we have, generally speaking, the difference between eleven point eight and eight million, three point eight million.
Last year was exactly eight million.
Okay, so we have three point eight million in the budget paid for to do three point eight million dollars worth of phase two projects. Okay, so we have three point eight million in the budget paid for to do three point eight million dollars worth of phase two projects.
Yes, outstanding balance of all.
That's right. That's good.
Yeah, that's good.
That's good because I was worried about that thirty dollars coming out of the budget real fast. Uh, second thing, uh, the facility plan for the, well, I guess this is a capital, it'll come up next week. But I didn't see any money budgeted for the engineering for the facility plan for the sewer and irrigation work that we wanted to get from SRF.
Oh, you're talking about the CIP?
Yes.
I believe that was talked about at the last meeting for them to bring forward an estimate, or am I making that up?
I think you're right, but I didn't see a line item anywhere, but we'll discover.
I would have to probably.
But that's going to be an add-on. Now, I'm going to guess it's, I'm going to get a negative of fifty, seventy-five thousand bucks. So we need to anticipate that going in, coming in.
And that's how we paid for the one this year for, what was the one that was?
CIP for utilities. We pulled out of the utility capital, those are sixty-five thousand dollars.
And then the only other one is that I had for Stephen was that we have been bouncing back and forth for the last, uh, week and a half on the EAUs. And I would say that notwithstanding Pelican, which is a mess, with the, with the, uh.
Well, thanks.
With the commercials over there. I don't want to touch that with a ten-foot pole. In Gateway, we're within twenty EAUs. He's twenty higher than I am, but I can't figure out where he's getting them because I'm counting them off the plaque. And I haven't gotten to give me an answer. And on the commercials, we're within ten. So it's one of those things I like to have correct because we're doing assessments. It can't be ninety-five percent correct. It has to be a hundred percent correct.
And it seems like from those conversations that a lot of issues with LEPA, it's not so much than for Mark.
They are, yeah, they, they, I told them today, you need to be checking because they've got two lots. Good example, Area Two with debt, Tony. Area Two with debt, two lots in Silver Lakes that are being built at one and a half times. No other lot in Silver Lakes is that away. But yet you go to LEPA and it's one single family unit. Like. And then they've got Area Two residential as the church, Reverend's Church, and the, uh, OAK building right down here, own commercial in the residential calculation. So these are just things that I don't understand. I just don't think there's been the level of effort put on their part to come down here and or go to LEPA to one and check this stuff out. And it's, it's got to be right because if they overestimate, I'm really not so worried if they're underestimating. Because if we underestimate, we divide by a lower number, we get a bigger rate. At least then when you multiply, you get the revenue. You overestimate it means you get a lower rate. When you multiply what's coming in, you are going to develop the revenue in a budget you think you want or going, we're going to get. Big difference.